He came here and wanted to contact the region, so that's right.
Now, we we got very high ratings, but you have it very cold. He said, you're in a tight ship here, girl. I know.
Is it really, though?
There was a few jokes going through.
It is. We noticed it Friday. I noticed it Friday.
You didn't know I had to work on it?
And then it's out behind today. So he's gonna call someone else.
It was, I think. That's true.
What happened with me? I'm just being quiet. My only agenda that has any better questions?
Yeah, I have you on a different level. We we have two high rises in the street square, one of whom is there. Do you guys have those innovation? I don't know, but like, do you have a skater system? Not really. Well, they're putting a new one. We have some new ones already. They're replacing their analog one called Train is not a.
Yeah.
And they've been doing this for like three months. And they called us last week like, hey, we're trying to turn all this on, but it's not going along. I was like, what's not going along? They're like, our building innovation system. I'm like, well, what system wasn't? Wasn't all the analog system? I'm like, well, that's not the issue. So their whole building, they can't control the HVAC unless they put each floor. Like, if you say it's too cold in here, they have to go up there and program it. They can't do it anywhere else. So it's like a red alert.
We're laying in bed and it was like shaking, like. It had no load like us. It was loud. It was loud. What did they do, like five big moves? Yeah, we were at bed. I said, what time is tomorrow? I was like, nine thirty.
I was, I was nice out of a rivalry.
It's all mine.
Yeah, I still get it. That's all.
Yeah.
Right, it's like. They were. I I just didn't know if you see where they're.
Right?
We're young, Barry. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Little Charlie Caldwell.
Here.
Here.
Ray Jackson.
Here.
Justin Gettle.
Here.
You Stevens.
Yeah.
And myself, Tim Ben. Uh, I believe you're in for a 26 budget.
Y'all got paper. Y'all got a paper. That's gonna be the budget for 2026. Um, if you have any questions, it's on the notice to taxpayers. That's what the budget is. So, have any questions? Derek, I'll answer some. He's like, he's very good at working on the budget this year. He's helping me out a lot.
That's, is that just the total dollar figure for your budget?
I don't think it is. Yeah.
They probably, they probably haven't seen the line items since.
Yeah. I haven't seen that.
Well, that was, that figures you see is what was published. That's kind of our maximum dollar amount. So I'll share with you as line items. We're not voting on it tonight. Tonight's public hearing. But after tonight, I don't believe we can go higher than any of those fund amounts. The more it's shown, adjusting down, we can adjust line items. We can't go higher than that dollar amount there. That's what is gonna impact taxpayers, that all dollar there.
So then the next meeting will be the, uh, the adoption or approval. October, yes, it'll be the adoption or approval.
There's no other questions, but if you guys don't have any questions, we'll, we'll get there and talk about it.
Uh, for a little bit. August 11th, February 28th. If anybody had a chance to make a motion, everybody wanna make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve it August 11th. Maybe going on to 25th, if that's the session we use.
Okay, make a motion to a second. I'll second. Are you made a second on paper? And yes, that.
Um, thank you for having me and, um, for all the support that you've offered to Lifetime over the years. My name's Erin Thomas. I'm the executive director, um, over at Lifetime, just across the street. Um, we are the area agency on aging, um, that serves these five counties here in Southeastern India. Um, but there is actually an organization like ours that serves every county across the state and in fact is a national thing as well, um, as part of the Order Americans Act. And so essentially what we do is a variety of services that are ultimately aimed at helping people maintain their independence and to stay in their homes when a lot of times they might otherwise face nursing facility placement or things like that. Because we're trying to delay uh, nursing facility placement for as long as possible, which saves Medicaid dollars and things like that. Um, and so, uh, what we do is we bring people in, we kind of look at what's going on in their situation. Um, we do what's called options counseling, which is presenting them with whatever options they have, and then we let them choose which direction they'd like to go. We never go in and kind of say, you know, you will do X, Y, and Z. We want them to have buy-in into their own care. Um, that sort of thing. And, um, then we, um, coordinate services. And so those services and fund and fund them. And so those services could be anything from meals to personal care attendance to, um, you know, even help for the caregivers. Uh, we have health and wellness programs. We have congregant meal sites where people can come for a daily, daily meal and socialization. Um, we also run Catcher Ride, which is public transportation. It's a little bit different because it's available to anyone for any purpose. It's not so much focused on the order of population. Um, however, in these areas of the folks that rely on Catcher Ride most are order adults, people with disability, low income, that sort of thing. So it ends up helping, you know, those populations that we're aiming to serve as part of our mission. Anyway, um, we also actually manage two properties as well. So we've managed Dillsborough Village Apartments and, uh, North Dearborn Village Apartments up in West Harrison. I don't typically mention that because it's not something I'm asking for funding to support, but I thought you might like to know that as well. Um, so I'm here asking for your support, um, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. And you would have received our packet there with sort of a letter that explains everything. Um, you can see all the services and everything that we provide in Dearborn County. Um, so that fifteen hundred dollar quest is less than one percent of our 2.4 million dollar budget in Dearborn alone. Uh, as I mentioned, we serve five counties and Catcher Ride actually extends it to a six. Um, I did look up some Dillsborough specific information, just so you can get an idea of how many individual individuals with a Dillsborough address actually utilize the service. Um, and so for calendar year 2024, there were sixty-nine individuals to use a little over three thousand case management units. Twenty, um, individuals attended congregant meal sites, um, where there's over fifteen hundred meals. Eleven individuals are receiving guardianship services, thirty-eight did health and wellness. Um, forty utilized a little over fourteen hundred trips for transportation. Um, and, uh, ten are receiving in-home services. So you can see it's, it's pretty well used, um, just for Dillsborough residents alone. And just to kind of give you an idea, you know, trying to help people maintain their independence for one, in their homes is where they prefer to be, but it's also the most effective cost-effective method, I guess, as well. So you can see there in the letter that our average, um, care plan, for example, on a monthly basis is around six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And if you compare that to nursing facility placement, you're looking at over eight thousand dollars a month. Um, so, you know, there's, there's sort of, that's the return on investment as well, is trying to keep them where they want to be and the most cost-effective way to do so. So I'm happy to answer any questions or anything like that. And, um, otherwise, I just thank you for your consideration.
For your Dillsborough Village Apartments?
Yes.
Is there an age group for that or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a HUD property for, for folks who are sixty-two plus. Yeah, and the one in, uh, North Dearborn Village is fifty-five plus. It's actually a tax credit property, so it's a little different, but, um, yeah.
And you have nineteen of units here in.
Uh, there's forty units over here and there's eighty at, at, uh, North Dearborn Village. That might be, we just, I'm not sure we're good for that.
So we got forty here?
Yeah.
And the age requirement is sixty-two.
Yeah, and we actually have, um, wait lists, significant wait lists that.
I know you do. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, and we're at, um, high nineties percentage-wise in terms of how off, you know, yeah.
That's why I was asking.
How often, yeah, they're filled. It's really just the time to turn over the units that we don't have them occupied. So I, I should probably also say importantly that, uh, the funding that we, um, if you were to offer funding, what we would do with it is, um, most of our funding comes from federal and state grants. And most of them have some sort of matching component. So for example, Catcher Ride requires a hundred percent match. Um, some of the others are twenty-five, twenty to, you know, fifteen, it depends. And so, um, without getting into the weeds, uh, your funding goes to support the various matching required environments and help us draw down more funds.
And this is for next year, you're asking to.
Correct, yes, for 2026. I should probably say for Catcher Ride as well, um, one new thing that we've offered is the ability to prepay per fares online now because sometimes people have trouble with having to have exact change. Um, and it's obviously difficult for us to be able to provide change to drivers across six counties. Um, the other thing that's impacting Catcher Ride right now is there has been a side curtain airbag recall for like two hundred and fifty thousand vehicles across the US. And we've been hit hard by that. So thirteen of our thirty-two vehicles are out of service right now. So we're having to take the ones that we have available and split them morning and afternoon and kind of do all kinds of wild things to try to keep as much service out there as, as possible right now. But if you hear anything, that's why. We also have a waitlist for the first time since I've been at the organization, um, and probably actually for like twenty years. Um, so we are doing everything that we can to get as many services to as many folks as possible, but we do have a waitlist for services right now.
So do they have, for Catcher Ride, do they have to schedule that?
Yeah, they can schedule up to thirty days in advance. I don't mean to scare you because you don't have to be that far in advance, but we actually increased that from seven days to thirty days a couple of years ago because we had folks, for example, who have a monthly doctor's appointment and they weren't able to schedule until a week before. And then if we weren't available, they had to move their appointment and things like that. So we increased it to thirty days. Um, you can call same day if you want, but as you can imagine, as we, our schedule fills up every single day and you get closer and closer to the day of service, there's just less and less availability for what you may need. So, um, I always tell people like, help me help you. You know, if you need to be somewhere at a very specific time, particularly if you live out in the county and it's gonna be a longer trip, then call as far as in advance as possible and just kind of work with us so that we can get you on the schedule. Cause every day is different. Um, it's just first come, first served in the way that the scheduling comes together as a result. Um, it's much different than what you think of in a, in a large city system where there's bus stops and specific times. People in a rural area are not going to and from the same place at the same time or any sort of schedule that exists. So it's more like a, more like a taxi.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna make a motion. It, I don't know, maybe January before, before the budget, whatever, whatever.
I'll make a motion to approve this fifteen hundred dollar donation on second.
On paper?
I have.
Thank you all. Yes, the owner has her first vote.
And then I don't know if we want to move, um, my IT place, Windows 11 upgrade stuff, um, with respect for Sam's time. I have that listed as the first item under new business. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Not, it's not too much. I was gonna start with hello. I met most of you guys before, but I don't think I have. So it's nice to meet most of you. Um, I'm Sam with my IT place and I'm the main account manager of Dillsborough. Um, account manager means I essentially work with Eric to make sure the town of Dillsborough knows what they need, can forecast capital expense in forms of IT and also making sure you guys stay compliant. Compliance is specifically the reason that I'm here today. Um, on October fourteenth of twenty twenty-five, that's this year, uh, Windows 10 will be deprecated. That's especially hard for Dillsborough because we didn't meet you guys until this physical budget year. Um, that doesn't remove the compliance or the issues with running Windows 10 versus Windows 11. It just removed the ability to know which machines needed to be upgraded and also to budget it for another calendar year. Uh, what does Microsoft's compliance and deprecation of Windows 10 mean? This means Microsoft will no longer monitor, maintain, or support as well as update Windows 10. So there's no security updates. This equates to no security updates for the OS. Dillsborough is primarily using, most of Dillsborough's machine are Windows 10. We did an audit where we did the onboarding, um, that was a quote that went out. Uh, while onboarding Dillsborough, we knew this wouldn't need to be audited, processed, and presented. This was approved to be performed on the server and workstation configuration and standardization quotes. These services will be considered to be completed after the completion of this forum meeting. Uh, Derek was sent to Dillsborough's first findings report on four fourteenth of twenty twenty-five that led to this meeting. Um, the conditions, the conditions of this report required multiple more onsite visits and remote consultations to figure out if that's solution. These appointments were to verify both what Dillsborough currently has and what they need. We're not just giving you guys what we want to give you guys. We're giving you guys what you actually need simply to keep you in compliance. Um, we'll discuss that later. Um, after auditing what Dillsborough has and determining what they need, I worked with Derek directly to determine the best IT solution. The solution we created will put Dillsborough's workstations into IT compliance. This compliance can be audited or this compliance can be audited or required, but not limited by the following, but not limited to Microsoft, third-party vendors, the EPA, and or the SCADA. Um, at the end of the day, we're talking about security. Um, anyone can be hacked, right? We're not gonna make you guys foolproof even if the government gets hacked. Um, what we're proposing, why we're proposing these solutions is to mitigate risk, reduce liability, increase efficiency, and de- decrease IT issues. The more issues you guys have, software not working with the OS, OS compatibility, compliance, audits, anything like that, the more, you know, labor goes up. Um, also, if something has, was to happen, it would greatly help the town of Dillsborough to tell the local news they were using currently supported operating systems instead of deprecated decade-old software. Um, with the reasoning and findings discussed, we can move on to what everyone cares about the most, which is capital expense. Um, this is kind of a brief scope of work. I should have handed this out before, but it's optimized and at the bottom, it kind of puts it all together. I did work with Derek on this, so you guys should recognize most of the workstations and or names on there. Um, am I allowed to discuss financials in here? I mean, it's public record, you know, it's right.
Yes.
Um, at the end of the day, we're talking about a scope of work with three new desktops, two new docking stations, one new file, share workstation, one workstation moved to the sewer. That's a relocation for one machine that is compliant. It's a little bit older, but it's still compliant. Uh, we can repurpose that. Um, and then no new peripherals. Uh, computers no longer come with monitors. Um, if somebody wants a monitor, it's usually personal preference. Some people use TVs. You guys can purchase those off your own, um, budget. We care about the workstations and the compliance. Um, the total project comes to a, just under ten thousand at ninety-seven hundred. Of that nearly ten thousand, uh, five thousand is decommissioning of workstations and the labor and materials for the new workstations. Five hundred of that is to set up workstations for Dillsborough's existing compliant laptops, basically repurposing which current machines, making them compliant. Twenty-one hundred is decommissioning the old server and the labor material to replace with a file share workstation. Technically, the town of Dillsborough has a server that they've never used. Um, it's a virtual machine sitting on a server. It's never been used. Um, a server in itself is ten to fifteen thousand dollars. That's more than this quote alone. Um, I worked with Derek, um, as far as budgeting goes, there's not necessarily a need for the town of Dillsborough to have a server anymore. Um, group policy is the biggest reason that you would have that. Um, they currently use our RMM software, which will do the group policy and user management. Um, it takes the ten thousand dollar cost and puts it out to like five dollars per user per month, which by the time you have the end of life of a server, it usually works out in most clients' favors to do it that way. So we still do the user management as well as the group policy offerings. We just do them in a different manner than in an on-prem server. Um, the formalized quote was sent, and I hope you guys have it, to Derek on nine two of twenty twenty-five. Um, and then I talk a lot and talk fast. Are there any questions in regards to that or what we covered in line? The only question I have, the company did call me today. Are you adding a workstation?
The tablet.
We are adding a tablet.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, um, our price is pretty straightforward. I don't have it in quote in front of me. I'm not the numbers guy. The solution's the account management, account management guy. But I did ask you our quote software to change, our quoting team to get simplified. You would just change the quantity. You should see a quantity next to workstations. If he changes or you guys determine to change for water, sewer, I don't know, we do a lot of towns, any buildings that you have, you would just change that number in the quantity. So it's easily calculated. Uh, that number won't change because we have standards. All of the workstations need compliance and they're all standardized. It's not like this one's different than this one. You have two line items on there, though. One's a standard workstation, one is a file server. The file share workstation, not server, sorry. Um, is a bit beefy for a machine because it shares out you guys', um, Keystone and software and other things.
I don't, I don't know if that other one's gonna be a standard one or not because he's important to the REITs.
Uh, Badger?
Yeah. It's a true device.
Okay.
I think it does, it does extend, I mean.
I, yes, I would assume that it would still be in compliance. Is your software compatible?
That's why I don't know about.
Okay, we'll audit that down the road. Regardless, that needs to be done. Badger can be on the side. We're running into issues with Badger with, um, Ausco. So what they, what we find out there, we can correlate it. But they're in the same boat as you guys. You have the yellow machine with the big antennas on it and tablets and stuff. Yeah. So we're familiar with that.
Question. And as far as backup capabilities, do we have anything like that in case things compromise?
So you guys technically have another quote from us that we haven't got to yet. Um, when we onboarded you guys, we knew when we found out, hey, who does you, who's managed you guys before? And we got to know one, uh, we knew that this was gonna be a process. Um, there's already been two quotes approved and I'm assuming ran through capital expense because they were already accepted. Um, the first one is completed after this. What do we do with our old workstations and how do we get those compliant? The next one is, and that's on-prem, right? Your desktops, your laptops, your Badger media reading. The other version of that is going to be considered the cloud. That is going to be Office 365, OneDrive, SharePoint, files, backups. Those are two separate entities. It used to just be everybody had a workstation, your files were on there. And then the workstation died and lost everything. I can't answer just verbally as far as your account goes, how that can be handled currently. Um, your file share server workstation, we will back that up to the cloud. So Keystone, Keybud, all of that stuff, that will go down. Somebody deletes an email that they shouldn't have deleted, something's saved in OneDrive. We haven't done that audit yet. We wanted to get through this first. Um, how we handle that, I can just go ahead and put it on record on, we use Dropswing. It's a small license cost. It backs up the entire OneDrive, SharePoint, and it's per user. The reason we do that is, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Office 365, when you have an email user, they get OneDrive, which is OneDrive for one person. We synchronize that out. That's one terabyte. If you have ten users, the town of Dillsborough, that means their SharePoint, which is why we're not putting in a server, their SharePoint gets ten terabytes. Because it aggregates those one terabytes together into ten. So you basically have a cloud server that has ten terabytes. Why is the town of Dillsborough not using that? It's not secure. It's not audited and it's not backed up. So we're gonna start here locally and then move out to the cloud. Um, are there any other questions? Cause I do kind of want to go off of that as well, though. Um, moving forward from that, I do have a question and I hate to ask it, but is, has IT and security, because it has a real cost, been audited into the 2026 budget? Because I know I'm in a pain point Derek's side where it's like, these aren't my standards. Um, I'll give you another one. EPA is pushing stuff down for water and wastewater. Doing it with other cities and other towns. Um, a plan for it needs to be proposed by the end of 2026. It needs to be implemented in the end of 2027. So right now we're working with Windows in compliance. Other towns kind of had their water shut off, uh, Mason specifically, but it's a local one. Their whole town, like, they hacked their skater system and nobody had water. Um, because of that, the EPA put out standards and says you have to do X, Y, and Z. Uh, we're working through that, but knowing that all those things are coming down the road, that costs money. Uh, I didn't know if you guys wrote into the budget expense for 2026 for IT.
It's our standard monthly costs.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I am the account manager, Derek, if you want to work on that, we can work on that and project into the future. Uh, we, we do one to five-year plans. When are my machines gonna, instead of doing it this way, retroactively, because we didn't have a relationship and a partnership with you guys, we can say, hey, you know, in four years from now, those Windows 11 machines should probably get wrote in for a capital expense. Hey, six years from now, we're gonna need a new skater system.
Right.
IT has capital expense and monthly costs. I didn't know if those were written. We can work on that in the future. Same thing with the police department. Uh, you guys linked to the county. Uh, just with our recording system. Okay. I, I'm sure that that probably has a cost that you contribute to them and then you write that into the budget. I'm sure that that probably has a cost that you contribute to them and then you write that into the budget.
Luckily for us, there's no cost to those small towns, right?
That is good, that.
I saw one, you know.
Um, are there any other questions?
Sam, there's one question these guys asked me. I don't know. On this year list, you got Main Street, then you got Tammy.
I'm assuming that's Kay.
Is that Cammy?
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So then is Cammy going to use her laptop from Main Street and for this?
I look at the way we can do without purchasing a ton of new computers. So I know Cammy and I just got new laptops.
Right.
I asked Sam the prices for docking stations, which is a small device.
Again, the most, this is in my opinion, we worked for six months on this. This is the most economical way to get you guys into compliance. There's no frills, there's no extra server, there's no extra cloud services, right? This is just, what do we have to do? We can work on the best way to do it essentially down the road.
I think Cammy's computer, her desktop, I think is only one, but Sam said it could be upgraded for compliance under the eleven. So we talked, you know, my idea was to move that out to the sewer plant. Um, and only get the new ones on kind of the highest-risk devices.
I thought it didn't have to be found by all. They make quotas at work, the state quotas, and it didn't, my own. It do, redo ours already.
So you guys are like one of the last. Because we just met you guys, just started our partnership, just finished our audit for the onboarding. You guys are one of the last people we finished. We gave that similar deadline. Knowing that it's no, on October fourteenth, you never get another. They don't care, Windows does not care about Windows ten anymore. Uh, after that date. So we have to, we have thousands of machines out there. We have to get all of those cut over. We ran hundreds of reports to get all of our clients over. You guys, to be honest, one of the last ones, which is why I'm presenting here, because here's the other thing for Derek. I would say one to two weeks for procurement after this is accepted, one to two weeks for scheduling, and then a week for install. So we're talking five weeks and October fourteenth, it's like six weeks left. So it's, we're on a narrow timeframe here to actually procure the equipment as well as install. Do we have any other questions?
Derek, where, where would this one be canceled at? Riverboat or do you have it somewhere in there?
I was hoping we could negotiate ten thousand off Tim's contract.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I, I guess Riverboat. I mean, we could maybe pull it out of utilities and split them up a little bit, little bit. Um, but yeah, we definitely didn't have ten thousand to budget it for new computers this year.
I do apologize for that. Um, if you guys would like to discuss after or during when I'm not here, we can do a one to five-year plan, get that wrote out for you guys that we don't experience this anymore. But we didn't know what we didn't know, just the same as you guys didn't know what you didn't know until we onboarded you, but that doesn't change the compliance.
Is that total without two laptops?
Yes, that's just, that's basically three D computers, a, what do you call it, a server, like a file management.
So it is a file, server workstation is what it is. It just doesn't control the users. We're going to control that outside the building. Um, which changes the cost from ten to fifteen to, I think it was probably two to three on that quote, I'm assuming.
So basically four computers and two docking stations.
One hybrid server, says it won't be a file server. Um, three workstations, two docking stations, one workstation upgrade and move, and then all of your software. So when we do this, all software, and I'm sorry to give you heartburn, but all software would have to be picked up. And all that labor and materials included with that.
You said that's October of this year?
October fourteenth.
Derek, you, you audit the laptops we have. I know you did our desktops, but what about our laptops?
Are you talking about top books?
Well, it's not top book, but we have a different.
Did we put a, did we put a security stack on them? When we did your onboarding, did we, do you have stickers? There you go. That's a good question.
You never gave stickers, but I don't know.
That we don't know that they exist. Um, we.
You know, that stuff, whatever you and I just do, I know a lot of stuff then. Well, we can talk about that.
We, we can talk. Um, how old are they? One year, three years, six years?
Five, six.
They're going to be close. It's possible. If we can upgrade them, we'll upgrade them. We can do that remotely. We don't have to touch anything. If it can't be upgraded, it has to have a TPM module. That's what they're pushing for. Um, yeah, that's, that really is what it is. If you don't have a TPM module, I can take your laptop home and take the hard drive out and steal all your data. On Windows eleven with TPM module, you can't do that anymore. That's the real reason that they're trying to push everybody to do it. Any last thoughts?
One on each, though.
Is it roughly the same price?
Just change the quantity.
So the desktop and laptop?
Unless it's a top book. If it's a top book, like, see, it's thirty-one.
But it's semi-rugged. Remember what that exactly it is.
If it's a standard laptop, standard laptop, standard desktop would follow that pricing. If it's going to be semi-rugged or rugged, that change is greatest.
It's rugged. It's their rugged. They're not this regular.
Remind me when you think. I don't foresee it being a huge idea.
Is that something we can do with a laptop and a docking station potentially?
That's, that is the other route.
Well, I'm not opposed to, to doing that, that, to help out.
Which that wouldn't change the quantity, it would just change docking stations are relatively cheap.
Then you guys would just have all your get laptop out here and that's.
Yeah.
Get rid of the, get your laptop fixed. As long as they just have a good docking station for lots of people.
Right.
But you can't, or you can probably, but, but they have to be rugged to hold it. So we're in a rut and get a laptop while on this.
Right. So. We've done, we've done plenty of docking stations in our ass or something like that.
Alright.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're going to talk about a little more.
I don't blame you on that. Yeah, I was just here to present why and everything like that. Yeah. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Okay, oh, yes, thank you.
Rita.
Yeah, okay. Additional preparation of new bu, new business. We've already did the budget. Right. Sewer adjustments. Richard Stapleton on North Street. He had a water leak in the basement. Um, adjustment for seven hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-two cents. Dwayne Burris, he had a water leak in his driveway. Uh, sewer adjustment for one thousand, one forty-eight twelve. Gwen Schaefer on North Street, water heater and outside faucet sewer adjustment for one thousand, five sixty-three fifty-three. I know some of you have been concerned that these are high. But the Charlie can verify when you have a water leak in your, in the ground. You don't know about it until it really gets really bad.
Isn't their water bill higher every month?
Their water was, their bill was higher, but they paid it and they never thought they had a leak.
I mean, it had to have been substantially higher.
Exactly.
That's wrong.
How could they not know? Well, you know, I could give you the printout, but some people, but some people, you know.
And I know, Rita, you are great about letting people know if you see something.
Yeah, if I see something, I do. But when, okay, if I notice something, I'll print their thing out. And I will go back and see where the normal thing is. And when it starts getting higher, that's when, you know, that's when the, the, the leak started. Sometimes people don't realize. I know this one burst. He thought it was his toilet and it wasn't his toilet. I mean, and, uh, but this water's not going in, it's not going in the sewer. It's not going in the sewer. So they deserve a sewer adjustment. So. And they've already, I've already told them how much a sewer adjustment is. So.
You're getting a lot.
Love it.
Yeah, I agree. I, I just think that, and we need to put a cap or something on this because that's a lot.
Usually this is the first time it's been this high.
Yeah.
You know.
I just don't know how you guys could not know if you're paying a hundred dollars and all of a sudden you're paying three and four hundred dollars. You have to know something's going on. I mean.
Okay, Richard Stapleton, he was fine, okay? But he had a leak down in his basement. He never goes down in his basement. He used fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty gallon. So that was going to be seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The month before, he used two thousand, four hundred and twenty. And the month before that, he was average five hundred gallons.
So his has only been into the last two months.
Yes, yes. But he used fifty-two thousand gallons in one month.
So the other people, how long is theirs?
Okay, the other people? Okay. We, uh, like Dwayne Burris this last month. He used twenty-five thousand. And his bill is going to be eight hun, uh, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And he was the one that's been trying to figure out what's been going on. I mean, a fifteen thousand, twelve thousand. He's been trying to figure out what's going on and he's been paying it. And then he realized it, it was, it was the, it was the leak in, in the house, in the ground. And like Charlie, he had a leak in his ground. It took him for a while to, uh, to figure it out. I had somebody on Texas Gas Road. It took a year for them to figure out where the leak was. He had a long driveway. And then the other one, Gwen Schaefer, she said her water heater was behind, behind something. She didn't know she had, she used eleven thousand, eleven thousand gallon, no, a hundred and ten thousand gallon in one month. That was a water heater and outside faucet. That was in one month. So her bill was going to be one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars for sewer.
So her outside faucet was just running?
It was a leak.
A leak.
But it was the water heater. But the outside faucet, it's amazing what even a toilet running, how much, how much, uh, you don't realize. So anyway, I mean, his was one thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars just for one month, or hers was. And this water is not going to the sewer. So. This is the first, has there ever been, these three accounts has been this high?
Yeah.
And they've never been, usually it's, you know, this is just. So.
I think, I mean, have, have a little more responsibility work. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, if this is true during months, you know.
This water's not going in.
I think we're just going to have to maybe put in these one later out or something. Hey, you notice your bills double or triple, you might want to check.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of people don't do it.
I know.
They have all the time. Hey, they don't, they don't know what's coming.
Maybe, maybe we should put a, a limit on the amount. Sewer adjustment we give.
Happen. I mean, I'm all, I'm honest with you.
I mean, these people that, we don't have anything in place now, so we'll have to probably approve that, but.
Yeah, I mean.
But, but if we put something in place for future or whatever.
John said it can be available by, by call. Here's one. You have a call on that soon.
Allowed, yeah, but we'd be able to put like that.
You guys were considered not per that.
Well, we're going to have to.
We'll have to approve each, we don't have anything against it now, probably.
Yeah.
But, but for future, I think maybe if we could get something in, in ordinance or whatever, that limit the amount we pay for an adjustment or whatever. Anybody want to make a motion to approve these as is and talk to John and see about getting something to do with that maybe? I'll make a motion to pay, to pay these three this time, but we're going to try to get something put together. Get, get some kind of that on. Future.
I'll second.
On favor?
I know these folks, thank you, because how, I mean, some of these are part of this income and there's no way they could pay a thousand, you know, fifteen hundred for a sewer, which I've worked with them when somebody does have a leak. So.
Right.
Okay, um, that's. Okay, uh, financial reports. You guys all about your financial reports. Um. We got the figures there on the general fund, hundred seventy-six, six twenty, sixty-five. Water operating fund is hundred sixty-five thousand, two forty-seven, fourteen. Sewer operating fund is two fifty-one, three, or three, four, nine. And they're looking good. I mean, comparative to years past. As you know, this room is kind of tops, little, I don't know, chairs missing. Um, state board of accounts started the day to do nodic for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And just to let you know, if you see some lights in here at six o'clock in the morning, they start at six. They work ten days. So anyway. Um, the twenty-twenty-five AIM summit, October twenty-first to twenty-third. Um, reservations has been made for Tim, Benny, Derek, and myself. And my guest counsel will include me going to this. And I got a nice thank you card from Dino. He says, council members, thank you for the gift card for Janet Steiner. It will be put to good use. And also, I also want to thank you all for the opportunities and support through the years. It meant a lot to me. Thanks again, Dino. And then I will be on vacation this Thursday. I'm heading to the office. It's the only thing I got.
Does that got anything else for Rita? Oh, perfect. Listen.
Good evening. I have much for you. I gave you the, uh, front reports for, for the run-through through the month of August. Just looking through it, but you could take the gunshot injury off of that. That was, uh, we were not dispatched. That was, it would have been homicide, but they attached me on it. As the chief of the department versus attaching me as the, the inmate or something. We was not there. The other thing that we have going on this month is we have our aug roast on the twenty-eighth, Sunday, the twenty-eighth, from eleven till we run out. We're going to have the same suspects, the food, with the whole pair of steaks, um, cold salt, egg beans, breads, desserts, you know. I hope to see everybody, uh, in that.
Yep.
Pretty well done. If anybody has questions for me.
Need somebody donate desserts? I'll give you some.
If you want to, it's, you just bring about that morning before we eat.
Alright.
You want to have some food there, it'll come up.
Okay, I'll work, such as.
Wonderful.
Appreciate it. I don't know, I have to work. I have to work. They're resigning now.
We'll tell them what I'm already.
I know. I'm not cooking today. You guys go with it.
Right.
Thank you, dude. Thank you. Police department, Josh.
Uh, some good news. Tommy interrupted some of my vehicle that AC issue. They believe they fixed it as the rear evaporator wore, so that has been fixed. So hopefully, say it's working.
The dog, huh?
Yes. So, but then unfortunately, there's an oil leak in it. And it's been, uh, four oil clean changes last couple. So I had him give me an estimate while I was there, you know, very, just, he doesn't like doing that kind of work anymore. So, um, so it's seventeen hundred dollars to get that fixed. Um, you know, obviously it's kind of a poor oil. My goal, I'd like to make that car try my, you know, good two, three more years. So we have something, we should get fixed. Um, you know, trying to make that car last, uh, last of the life of a K-nine. So I'm not outfitting another car because after that K-nine, I'm probably done working with the hope. So just trying to make that car last as long as possible. Um, it's a twenty-twenty. Probably it's coming up on eighty-seven thousand miles on it, plus a lot of idle hours with it being a K-nine car. So trying to do the best to fix in that. So, uh, just wanted to get Ford's blessing to get that fixed.
How much you say that was?
Seventeen hundred.
I'll make a motion to.
I'll let him do that.
I'll get. How much?
Seventeen hundred.
Hundred.
I'll serve it. Dustin, take a second. On favor?
Hi. Well, I think me and Derek will figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah. Corporates.
Talked about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, then the only other thing I really have, um, so our ballistics vests, they, um, are only good for five years. I thought mine is good for one more year, but apparently I was brain dead and it was with the wrong power that I thought that when I got mine. Mine's expired, which presents a problem if I was ever shot in the line of duty awareness right now, it's possible to save and die for my family's benefits because the vest I'm wearing is over five years old. So, um, I got a quote for that. It's fourteen. So, um, I got a quote for that, it's fourteen fifty, um, I kind of sat down, went over my budget for the rest of the year, I'm comfortable saying I can pay a hundred out of it, which is not something we budget every year. Um, so I'm looking for six hundred and fifty bucks, so I can go ahead and get that, so eight hundred out of mine, six fifty from wherever we can work that out of.
Yeah, we talked about maybe going to general operating on Rita.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
So I'll make a motion that we pay what's.
Six sixty for vests.
Fifty for vests for Josh.
Sorry, made this motion, Charlie second, on favor?
Hi.
Alright.
Now I'm kind of working with Derek, I know we've been trying to get better about budgeting and things like that, that's just, obviously, it's only every five years, so it's not fine every year. So, I don't know, anything else is working, working good?
Right. So, do you got anything to Josh? Thank you, Josh.
Thanks.
Utification, Charlie? Main Street, Tim?
For, Phil's for a Main Street, once we're meeting, this goes on for tomorrow, a lot of the members that make it, so we're meeting tomorrow here at six o'clock. Um, we've just been working on, um, hometown Christmas. We're gonna try to do some more kid-friendly events for hometown Christmas. I contacted three Bella Choirs from Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky to maybe come down and play for entertainment. Um, they are not doing the Raisin Trees this year. It's a, it's a hall to Michigan from Melissa and Jay, for not turning over a good profit as they were years prior. So, we're thinking about just taking the extra funds from the Ross grant that we got to purchase some trees from maybe Lowe's or somewhere, so the kids still decorate. Um, we're just, uh, putting some azinens in for Heritage Days, which is the twentieth and twenty-first. Um, I will not be here that Friday the nineteenth. Uh, me and my entire family are in a wedding, so we won't be gone for the whole weekend. Um. That's really it, unless anyone has any questions for you. Thank you.
Don't have anything, I don't know.
You wanna jump to the top ten? However you want me to do it. So, I know it was sticker shop. But as you can tell by the white hair on my head, I've had some experience in this. And designing, is your insurance policy occurred change orders in the construction? You were saying there wasn't ten thousand dollars to cut? There, there is, if you notice, there's several items that, that's hourly and not to exceed, so. And by all means, our construction inspection and the actual project management is an hourly not to exceed. Just in case, uh, they, we do the full gamut of that entire, um, scheduled footprint, just because we don't want to be cut short. But typically, we do not utilize every, all, every penny of that construction inspection. Um, it's in the seventy-five percent range, probably on an average of most of these projects, so. The survey and the design work, which is the bulk of the upfront work, that is crucial. That's your insurance policy, not saying we're not gonna have change orders, I can't promise that, because they'll be on for same things. They'll be things that nobody knew, was there, as we walked out there the other day, we, us three, and the other two gentlemen with me, we noticed some things that may be able to save some money, and if that can save money, it's definitely gonna be a fast one. Or not, you picked us for a reason, I hope that reason was trust. Um, I want to do the best job for Gil's World, and my co-compadres bailed on me today, so I'm solo, but I didn't have a problem coming down here, and if you have any questions on it, by all means, fire away, I'll do the best I can. We are under a tight, tight timeframe, and it's critical that we get this going, because that application has to be in by October thirty-first, there's no danger left. If it's not in, you, you can't participate, you won't get an extension. So, that's, that's the critical time, we've only basically got four weeks to get all this done. And that scared, it was part of our concern. Um, we could go into a two-week rain event, and that's gonna kill us on the survey field. So, I, I wish it was easier, I wish it was cheaper. I hate saying cheaper, more economical, but cheaper, and, and we will work with you, if we don't utilize it, it will not be billed, because it is a not to exceed. So, um, that's basically the only support I have for it. I wish it was cheap, but I know what we're gonna get hit to.
So, um, for the easements, because there's an appraisal process that's happened, right? That being in addition to the fees you proposed?
No, that's in, that's in, now, that's also, if you look, I think it's eighteen properties, we just, I don't think it's gonna be that many, I think it's probably more like twelve or thirteen, so there's a little saving there. But we didn't want to, I didn't want to lowball it, and we have a ten, then you go away event, you know, but we just went through and counted them all. So, I didn't want to, I didn't want you to decide which parcels or which routes you were gonna take to not have enough.
Right. Are you saying that it doesn't account for an offer that we would make to the?
True. I can't. Hopefully, we go out, and we've seen this in other communities, if we go out with a, a town, council member, or even a utility member, and we talk to these people, they're usually told me, here, I'll sign it and we're good. So, now a stranger walking around and down asking to sign an easement is not the best solution, so, um, we're gonna be asking for some help on this.
Is everybody, anybody have any questions, Tim?
And, and another good thing is that money, if you don't pay me that tonight, so it's scattered out over, you know, it's scattered out over the two years.
And this is grant eligible expense?
It is.
It's part of a stellar grant?
Yes.
I think it's eighty.
Eighty-one.
That we, we, we lost for twenty percent.
It's not all.
Any other questions, Tim? Motion for the contract? I'll make a motion that we approved the HWC contract. Made a motion, Charlie second, on favor?
Hi.
We'll work hard for you, I promise you.
Thank you, everyone.
I saw your, uh, surveyor out there today.
If you just said no, we. Yep, yep. I just didn't want to lose out, I had him for a day, it was in the area, and I'm like, go to Gil's for a, I said, okay. Yeah, you'll see us a lot more.
Take it out of Tim's salary.
You can go ahead and just, uh, sit scan it, sign copy.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you, thank you both.
I'm gonna struggle, get this one out in an hour now.
Okay. So I have one-two-nine-one-six North Street, um, we did get our appraisal back, and I do have a RFP. Really didn't change much involved in what I presented last time, other than just kind of filling in the dates. I'll just note, as part of this process we're going through, my understanding of the, the value of any proposal has to be the average of two appraisals. Me being employee, you can offer one appraisal, we also have this other, um, appraisal, this was completed by, um, Jeff Thomas, Appraisals Inc. Uh, his opinion of value for the property was sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, so essentially, who's ever want to make a proposal has to at least provide a proposed value of that amount, whether for paying for the property or for proposed improvements. Um, I can quickly go through this, um, but just to highlight really, the dates is all I've added, from what we last talked about. Um, I was proposing to issue this tomorrow, having proposal due by October thirty-first, um, have a brief, um, kind of context at the beginning there. Um, and really what, if someone's interested in providing their proposal, they should really focus on kind of the section three submission requirements, we're asking them to provide us. And over you, their vision and mission, um, their, provide their redevelopment plan, outlining their intended use, uh, rehabilitation scope. Uh, provide us with timelines, um, assuming twelve-month completion, unless they can justify a longer completion, um, and expected occupancy plan. And then kind of their proposed lease or purchase option, um, provide, uh, sources of capital or evidence of, uh, financial capacity. Um, background qualifications of their team, um, and then just kind of explaining what their public benefit of their proposal will be to, to the town. Um, and then just that there's a commitment clause, if they don't fulfill, um, their agreement, um, it may resolve and revert it back to the town. Um, and then section four is kind of how I propose, uh, the, the design committee, Becky, myself, and Jerry will evaluate the proposals. And ask for three copies, so each of us three will get a copy, and then also an electronic copy that I can share with council. Um, I just asked that they, um, reach out to me with questions by October seventeenth, that way, I like to do, just kind of list every question and have a, a uniform answer. Um, and that we can also arrange for kind of an inspection up until that, that time period as well, uh, just by contacting me. Um, and then have the timeline outlined on that last page. Um, where everything stays on schedule, we just potentially have a recommendation to the council at November fifteenth.
I thought we changed the twelve-month completion to eighteen months.
Okay, I can change that.
Didn't we?
I know we discussed it, yeah, I know we discussed it, but, yeah.
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 So right now, I'm asking them, um, I'll just, I'll change that to eighteen months.
Yeah.
And then I'll issue that tomorrow, if you guys are good with everything else.
If any other comments, if any of them, Derek, I'm asking, not, we have a motion to approve this contract.
Land.
And I guess, maybe Jerry, Becky, you guys maybe keep the first couple of weeks of November there available, yeah, if that works for you all.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the redevelopment revi- revitalization for one-two-nine-one-six North Street, as long as the amendment moved from twelve months to eighteen months. Let's make a motion, second?
Second.
Becky, take second, on favor?
Hi.
Close.
Alright. And then one-two-eight-two-seven Linover Street, um, still not had, um, any takers on that property yet, um, in our, um, our contract, the period is kind of expired with K.W. Williams, um, there's a amendment that you all should have a copy of to extend that, I think, to the end of December, and also reduce the price from two seventy-five to, or from two ninety-five down to two seventy-five. Unless you guys wanted to do, you know, a different avenue or change courses on that.
Have you had anybody with that at all?
Not, I don't think we've had much recently, no.
Make it lower than two seventy-five.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to get rid of, I mean. I think maybe we need to make it lower than that.
Yeah.
Say, some, I don't remember what it is, somebody looked at it and they, when they saw how much it was, they.
Yeah. You guys have a suggestion or do you want?
I mean, is that the same thing, that it has to go, like, be appraised value, or?
There, yeah, it's supposed to be the average of two appraisals, but, I mean, it's no one's off on the darn thing.
Yeah.
They justify it, or, you know, we can work on those appraisals, potentially.
I don't know, I just think maybe we should make it a bit lower than that, myself.
Yeah, and I mean, that's something else too, is we can, we can give them the appraisal down, we haven't actually gotten a government property yet.
Oh, we haven't?
That was one I was gonna, gonna see, as we move to that contract purchase price, once we got an offer. Go that way.
Is it true, the bank really gave us sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did it?
That's what, that's what's, that's what's on the.
Yeah.
There was an offer due us at that. Of course, we didn't make an offer either.
You guys talk.
Huh?
You guys talk.
The guy that body me?
I, I've talked to him.
I've heard a few things.
More than sixty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So, what do we want, what do we want to do with that, then, or we're probably, you want to go lower yet, or?
I, I think we go a little. I think we should, I mean, yeah.
How long?
So what were you saying, that we had it at two?
It was at two ninety-five, I think we started at three twenty-five, went to two ninety-five, and that was based off the opinion of, um, our realtor.
And then he's saying how much to drop it to?
Two seventy-five.
I said, two seventy-five. Do I? I say two fifty? You want two fifty?
Yeah, I think, I, I definitely think it's more interest to us that something's going on there than, than we get top dollar.
Yeah.
And I told.
I'd say two fifty-nine.
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, I'd say two fifty or.
Two fifty-nine. I'll make a motion, we go, two fifty-nine, approve it.
Why two fifty, why not two fifty?
I'm gonna get a little more, I mean, I think if it don't go, then we can always go down more, but that's.
But how long's the contract for then, six months or?
It wa- I think it was a three-month extension, so if we were assigned that, you would extend this to here, somewhere on something, I think it might have been a different date in December, but it was end of December. I don't think it's too terribly difficult, just extend it.
Right, yeah.
So I made a motion for two fifty-nine. Second, on that.
You made a motion for what?
Lower it to two fifty-nine. Same contract, three months.
Um, I'll second.
Jerry second, on favor? Close.
Um, we've already addressed the filler pathway sidewalk, um, improvements with HWC, so move on to the emergency services garage. Um, so the mind we have, the concrete bids and the electrical bids. It was, we had four bids for concrete. Um, and then so we, we asked them to price the garage floor, which is a forty by forty, uh, approach on the east side, which would be the width of the garage, forty feet to the alley, which was twenty feet, and then an approach on the west side, which would just kind of be a, um, a ten-foot kind of uh, concrete pad, just kind of in front of the doors, keep rocks and everything out of the building. Um, so the first one, and then, um, also, we, we, I asked them to price the, uh, exclusives of the concrete material that we purchased that, and it's a lot easier to get our tax extensions and stuff that way, so just keep in mind that this is the price without purchase.
It's late, it's too late.
Um, yes, and I, and I, and I, my, my, uh.
Do we have a copy of these bids?
I can get you copies after, after we.
Well, I didn't know if I had a copy laying in front of me.
No, we don't have any. You don't have any, right? So this is kind of where, um, my current estimates are at, so when I call for the, uh, concrete. You know, we're at seventy-five, sixty, um, so the first one, this is from John P. Tomlinson and Sons. They had the, the concrete, the garage floor at five thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars, and then they had the approaches at an additional three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, for a total of nine thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So the.
This, so, that I hope it's not our price.
It was one thousand six hundred twenty feet for the garage floor, eight hundred and forty. It was one thousand six hundred square feet for the garage floor, eight hundred and forty square feet for the two bridges. Straight line concrete, their bid was twenty four thousand two hundred for both. Draft and buyer construction concrete, they've been at eight thousand five hundred dollars for both. And then top line hands. Been at seventeen thousand two hundred. So the low one would be from Draft and Buyer at eight five hundred.
Did you firm up a brighter? I think I know who that is.
Honestly, not sure. Lake Homer's want to share this contact.
I know he is. He's a good guy. He really is.
So I can, we can kind of hang on to that and I'll, I'll go ahead and go through the electrical because. I think we had three on that. So the first one is the electrical connections. So, and this is everything. So this is basically pulling a sub panel or existing garage and then wire. Whole garage, lights, garage doors. So their, their bid came to end at sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety. The electrical connections. R C Electric was eight thousand nine hundred point five. Eight thousand nine hundred and twenty five for R C. So Whiskey City Electric. Their bid is twenty three thousand eighty two dollars. And then last is E Q S Inc. Their is twenty six thousand four hundred twenty one dollars seventy five cents.
And then we need to make a motion to approve the concrete and electric work. Concrete from draft, ground and fire and electric work from R C.
Yep. So I can, I can send these all to you all for your record. I'll update kind of the cost estimates too, but I think that's. They're going to be pretty close. To what we're seeing. And then I also noted how our other commitments for sources of funding.
We have a motion to accept that.
I'll make a motion to accept Draft and Buyer eight five hundred for the concrete and R C Electric eighty nine twenty five for the electrical.
I did just have the pickleball basketball course on there. I don't know if you guys had more thoughts than that. I don't know if you want to discuss it any further. We haven't heard back yet from the community foundation and if they were going to award us that grant. I would assume that would happen sometime over the next three to four weeks and we're going to have to make a decision by our October council. So just want to kind of keep that on your radar. I think, I think the bids are only held till it's like our October council. So there's no question, there are discussions on that. We do have the Dearborn County Regional Sewer District easement. So we talked about this. I'm, I don't have any objections as to where they're proposing. So again, this is a. An easement for a sanitary sewer, low pressure force main through our sewer plant. Kind of coming off from the north, kind of where Dusty Gaudette is property. Around the west side of our lagoons, kind of bends around by our garage and comes into our headworks. They've worked with me on kind of. I hope they're successful. It'd be nice, a nice customer for us as well.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Dearborn County Regional Sewer District easement.
Then just. Sewer rates. So again, if you remember back earlier this year. We had a cost of service study completed, assuming that the county sewer district became one of our customers. So this, just that, this is not an increase for our current customers. It was kind of restructuring our rate schedule a little bit. And kind of outlining the, the bill, the billing for D C R S D. So I don't, I mean, you guys are okay. I'll probably went, go to, had and scheduled a public hearing at our October meeting. So we can formally start that process of our sewer rates. But again, that was not, it's not increasing our.
All right.
Like I said, if you, if you guys need to resend that to you again or anything, just let me know. I'll, I'll get you that ordinance once I get what you want to get that draft. No other whole business. Then we already talked about the Windows eleven upgrades. I don't know if we want to talk about that some more. I'm always a little skeptical sometimes when people are trying to sell stuff, but I can confirm that, I mean, it is a legitimate thing. Windows ten is.
It is because we just had to do it at work.
And I think the longer we go without upgrading, the bigger risk we're taking, you know, that's. As Sam said, we're not, Windows is not upgrading those for a security patch. That's where they not.
Do we have to get them, the computers from them? Can we get them somewhere else and updating ourselves? Yeah. It was very easy to do, update to Windows eleven. It was not hard at all. Did you have to do it? We had to do it because of state. Well, we had to do it because of the state computers and it was, I mean, it took me about two and a half, three hours to do it. Is what it took.
Yeah, so we can thoroughly chop it out. We kind of started this process with my IT place a while back. I think sometimes they try to sell us maybe more than what we need to some extent. And I was a little, I think ten thousand seems kind of steep for marine computers and two docking stations.
I might have a docking station at my house and box is every middle. I think I do.
Well, my question is, does it have to be a windowed operating system? I mean, there's other options out there. I mean, you can switch over to a Google Doc. And have a cloud service and I mean, I don't know if there's an industrial application for it, but I mean, there's personally used for you to do that. I mean, I don't think the things that we're running are too terribly complicated as far as operating the farm.
The only thing I worry about is the building and what the police are doing, which is why we, you know, I told Sam, I said, we're going to get three. We're going to get computers like these are the three that I think we have to get. And then, I, I don't know to make it wrong. Oh, where? I mean, I'm sure there's Apple products that I'm sure are more expensive.
I mean, I just wonder if we could get priced, more prices or not. I didn't know if we have contract with them. We had to.
We do have a contract with them, but I mean, it's, we're kind of in that early trial phase. So I mean, I think we signed that back in May.
I would kind of like to see that, you know.
Right. You know, I think Sam brought up some stuff about like our server or example. I mean, we've had it for a while. We've not really been using them. Be nice to kind of integrate things and make it work a lot better. You know, I'm not going to lie and say I'm an expert on that stuff. But it does seem like you sell us. You know, I'd love to replace every water line in town too. We only got so much we can do. Yeah, I can. I'm a little worried about timeline.
You have to have it. You, you will lose, I mean, you will, you have to have it that.
Because October fourteenth, I mean, that's basically our next council.
And maybe it won't be any cheaper. I don't know, but it would just kind of be nice to shop around, just to see.
I mean, I think, I think if we wait, I think we're not going to hit that deadline potentially.
Well, the only problem is the cost. That's a lot of money.
I don't know how to get. We could get some out of water and sewer or whatever. Part of that.
I don't know how to transfer draw, I mean, I can't just buy a computer and transfer drawings.
Nah, I'd have to work with John Lee down in county and stuff about getting our Spelman, which is our report management system. Over there plus our E tickets. So I mean, it's not difficult.
Couple parties getting involved, getting that done for us. Do we have a spot where we can pull funds from for this right now?
We have our savings. I don't know that there's a ton of line items that, you know, we're not planning on spending for this year. Depending on how the, depending on how projects start, when we start getting invoices on them. I mean, we might end the year fine and then a bunch of stuff rolls over to point six.
It sounds like we're kind of fictional, isn't it? I think we're going to run out of time before we have to try and get this set approved.
So I don't, I don't know if October fifteenth is where we have to or anything like that either, you know.
But didn't he say that he can work with a few things on that bid that's not doing?
I don't think he did. I thought he did. Yeah, I thought he did.
I think that was one of the five year plan.
I don't, I mean, it sounds like we do it. We got, we're in a timeline crunch. Why would we do a special meeting? So yeah, we're going to do it. We're all here, so.
I'll make a motion. We approve the proposal from my IT place to the amount of nine thousand seven hundred forty seven dollars and fifty cents. For the Windows eleven upgrades.
Where are you paying it from?
Yeah, we got to figure, that's the next step and we got to figure that out, so.
I mean, I would say the relation of our water sewage is Riverboat.
And where water sewage?
I just feel like we're really getting Riverboat hard. We aren't, we really aren't. I think we need to not do Riverboat if we can keep from us.
What's another one we could?
Uh, that's it.
General. I mean, the Riverboat is one of the healthy savings that, you know, we're not consistently spending all our revenue. And I think where were we at most recently? Were we at one point two million? I mean, we've, we've been pretty conservative with the last years.
One year we didn't even spend anything however in the first.
That's Riverboat. So you're counting for that even if it's not available? What about? I mean, you're going some of the replacement gears. Is there not what's public safety look like? I know you guys are long term, you're. Things stay the way they are, you're going to spend more out of it than is available, but needed to get bought for now.
Now we have our fuel and capital improvement funds. Did we spend? We already used that in Keystone software. We got a little bit.
So we can leave a riverboat alone. What was the two that you said? You said the water and sewer. There we go.
Well, what about public safety? There's ninety seven thousand from that. You were buying computers for our officers. I mean, yeah, I mean. Can we use that or no?
I can tell you, we. We budgeted to spend all our revenue this year, so.
You did?
Which is, I mean, that's what we consistently do. So I mean, most of what you see on that fund balance is what we kind of hold as our savings to some extent.
I was looking at public safety, but Eric said that's pretty much all spoken for.
We, we, I mean, we don't have ninety thousand dollar plans to spend out of it. We plan on ending the year ninety thousand dollars.
Well, Josh is getting that best of the public safety equipment probably. That's really.
So in twenty twenty six. You know, we have drafted, we spent sixty eight thousand on public safety and we expect our revenue to be probably around sixty thousand. And we had a fund balanced with the ninety seven thousand. We might eat, we might eat three to four thousand dollars at the end of that, I think, next year. And we had a fund balance with the ninety-seven thousand, so, we might eat, we might eat three to four thousand dollars at the end of that, I think, next year.
Yeah.
We stay.
I mean, if we have to use Riverboat, we have to, but I just, you know, I just, everything comes up, okay, add Riverboat. If something happens with Riverboat, we're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, realistically, after the Stella Project Fund, I mean, our River Road Fund is gonna be probably around eight hundred thousand.
I know.
Yeah, it will be.
Yeah.
Trying to find out.
Yeah, I know, that's why I'm asking.
I must have made a motion, right?
Yeah.
We're just trying to figure out where to save from where.
I know.
Just go with water and sewer, one there.
Make, I revise that to cool the sun from the water and sewer for the uh my IT place for those upgrades.
Charlie's hecking in on the favor.
Hi, hi.
Now, additional appropriations, Rita, do you wanna take this one or your maina?
Okay, yeah, I got to. You guys gotta cover this. So. Additional appropriations ordinance, is that an ordinance or is that a resolution?
Yeah, in.
I would think it's ordinance.
An ordinance, so this would be twenty twenty-five. Nine dash one. So anyway, so, personal services, twenty thousand. Riverboat, the Capitol Hathaway is a hundred thousand, and that's for the EMS building. Or the.
Fire department.
Fire department, yeah, fire department building. So anyways. Cause see, I gotta pay everything out of, out of Riverboat, then when our department and county trustee making me the money, then that'll go back to that Riverboat. So anyway, but, um, guys have any discussions on it, and then we gotta do a K or N, I can read your names. So, do you have any discussion on it right now?
What's the twenty thousand personal services for?
So, it's mainly for benefits, for health insurance, life insurance.
And are we gonna look, we're gonna look at that next year, right? Benefits?
I'm getting, I'm gonna reach out to any medical about pricing.
Okay. All right.
Um, and that's something I'm gonna mention later, too, when we talk about salary ordinances, I mean, we could talk about employees paying a higher percentage of premiums.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
What?
You want.
Okay, I have to do an A or N?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Tim, did it A or N?
A.
Becky Prana?
A.
Charlie Caldwell?
A.
Jared Jackson?
A.
Dustin Kitchell?
A.
Okay, and then I will have you guys sign this with the other ones. I think that's all we need.
Next, I have our road salt. Our contract's up, we had used more than salt last year, we're paying seventy-eight dollar ninety-three cents per ton. We had an obligation to purchase twenty-five tons, um, and we're allotted up to fifty tons. Um, so we have two, two quotes in for this. So this one's Morton's salt. So they have it at a hundred thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents per ton, that's a substantial increase.
What'd you say we got last year, I'm sorry?
Seventy-eight.
Okay.
Ninety-three. This is from Compass Mowers. They are not, they're unable to submit it as a font, so.
They was troubled on that.
I know, Tim, you know what, does their, they're already done their program.
It's out right now.
It's out now.
It's out right now.
Yeah, I think it comes in.
I know Endot has a program where you can kind of, like a wholesale purchaser with them, I might look into that before we agree to this.
Also check company source, though.
First of all. They're literally do the same.
It's a procurement, state procurement entity, so you can buy stuff on bulk that's already been procured.
Right.
Sometimes it's. Did you check?
It's on there.
Yeah.
Four two, that's second quarter. Yep. Yeah, I know, we, we'd probably like to order some here, probably within, probably by November, we're a little low. So I'll probably just table this for now.
Yeah. Yeah, table this, be, get more.
Um, next, I got the Sonic Lodge, they asked to do a fundraiser at the intersection of um Bryant and North Street during the spring shoot. Um, this Endots right away.
Spring shoot or this?
The spring, I'm, I'm sorry, the spring shoot, um, technically Endots right away, so I'm not, I'm not sure what, how, what Endot stands is on that, I do know other towns around the area allow such a thing. Um, my, my thoughts are, I don't necessarily know, we have an objection, we might just kind of.
I just, just advising you that there's a state road.
There's a state road that they.
Something that they wanna go with.
I don't know how you guys wanna approaches, if we, cause I'm afraid if people start seeing them out there, it might come up more frequently.
Well, I think we did it for the auxiliary, and we, they were just told to check Josh, to make sure it's okay with Josh, and we were gonna be dealing with. But I think they did the road back, which would not be.
That would be a penalty, yeah.
Right, and then they did the one up on the corner by the grocery store, I think, so those would not be state roads, I don't think, but, yeah.
You're back on that, Josh.
So, I mean, look, I, I would never, I mean, vaguely remember some of the approaches one time to do, don't think.
I still only did it once in time.
I thought yours was back, I heard of the state. Hey, or you can do that. Like a state, it's a state law, you're not allowed to stand at an intersection, number five, and the roadway, yeah, so, I was trying to.
Oh, that would be good to know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know.
They do them all the time.
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're gonna enforce anything, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know, we need an answer denied, but.
I, I don't think, I don't think it's up there anyway, really, I mean, I think it's, I think that's, that's a state road, it'd be up in the.
You're not talking now, you're talking as a spring, okay, okay.
I can tell you some cities and towns get involved in it, scheduling it, that sort of thing, so I don't know if you guys have a preference.
What, what it means that, that we don't have anything going on in town then, do we?
What?
During the spring shoot, it would be in June, spring.
I think it's just in June.
It's June, second with the.
Just munch flush.
Nothing on the green space for the.
That's right.
Yeah, there's one concert.
Oh, and you, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't need to sit down with anything about it, if you guys have thoughts on it, or feel strongly or whether or not they're not allowing it. And also what Josh found, and maybe we'll talk to the state on it. Okay, um, salary ordinance amendment, so, um, we talked about this in executive session, I discussed it with the town crew, um, they're not real, real happy about the probationary period, I don't actually have to draft salary ordinance amendment for you all, but I'm not sure what we're going to do.
See, but one thing is, it's they're not on probation, I feel like the position is on probation, not them, and maybe you need to make that clear to them. You know, that's, I mean, that's how I feel, I don't feel like the boys are on first, you know, I feel like the position, we're just trying to make sure it's gonna work, the position itself.
Right.
You know?
Do we wanna, I mean, do you want me to put the salary ordinance together, how we talked about with the fifty percent till basically the end of the year?
That's, yeah, I mean, that's what we decided, yeah, yeah.
Stay by that, that's what we talked about, let's prepare us forward, I mean, at the end of the day, they'll get their raises. I mean, in three months' time, they're gonna get it, so.
But they're still wanting three percent at the beginning of the year.
They still do, they should get the hundred percent at the beginning of the year.
No. Now, and will they be required to come to our meeting and tell us what they're doing, those two?
They will probably do.
And we have lines.
My opinion, we've worked out, we've had it laid out.
Yeah, yeah, me too, I agree, it's still what we decided.
What we decided.
Yeah.
Um, correct. I might see if I can put that on paper real quick before we leave today.
Okay.
And then, um, I guess we could, are we comfortable stating it, just for the record, and then?
We made a motion again, we made a motion the last time or whatever.
So we discussed it in executive session.
Well, that's right, okay, yeah, we do, we do need a motion.
We can make a formal decision.
We need a motion to, um, pay um fifty percent, fifty percent, three months.
Yeah, let's motion that, let me pull up, so we got the number on. So I don't, I don't know what they're gonna do, honestly, guys, because they, they're not thrilled about it, um.
So they're just not gonna do it then, I guess?
I don't know.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
About that, I, I'm just, I hate all this crap that's going on lately, I'm just kind of in the middle, wanna hear things. So I just wanna speak two cents about what I'm kind of feeling, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, but I just am tired of this, things are not going well around here. So, you guys hired this new superintendent, and you were gonna pay him X right at the beginning, with probationary period. Wasn't gonna get a raise at the end of probation, I, so why are you telling them fifty percent, and then another fifty at the end of the probation? Is the probation, like you said, for the job? Give the guys the money. Uh, it's just my two cents.
Yeah.
And that's how, I see that, looking at it, is you, you're gonna give this guy the money, with no experience, no license. It's almost insult, just how I see it, and what I'm hearing.
I mean, the one person getting a twenty percent increase, that's a pretty good increase.
I don't, I don't know the numbers, yeah, so, that, that's just all I'm saying, is, I think that's how they're looking at it, I don't take that from what they've told me, it's just kind of how I feel after taking.
Like, like Betty said, it's just, it's not, it's not the workers, I mean, it's just to find out.
We just wanna make sure it's going for the way we're doing it.
We don't wanna have to go, we don't wanna go back, take a payback, from in the film.
They're getting half the money now, and in ninety days, they're gonna get their other half, they're gonna get their raises, you know?
So I mean, I would just say for the record, um, the compensation adjustment that's proposed would be Mike Beach paid at twenty-seven fifty an hour. For the base pay, Brian Gravers' base pay was at twenty-eight, twenty-five an hour. Eric Gravers' base pay was at twenty-nine fifty per hour, um, and, and your result was fifty percent from.
Mike, twenty-seven fifty, Brian, twenty-eight, twenty-five, and Eric was twenty-nine.
You know, Mike was like a twenty percent increase in his salary. And the other one, one almost twelve percent, and the other one wasn't ten percent, I think.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so our current ordinance we're operating under, Mike Beach is at twenty-two eighty-nine an hour. Twenty-seven fifteen. Once. Twenty-two eighty-nine. So he was proposed to get a four dollar sixty-one cent on the hour raise, you guys are proposing.
Two thirty, and then the other two thirty, one.
Going in thirties.
He can do the two thirty-one and then.
For ninety days.
Yes.
Or two thirty-one, and then. And then additional two dollars and thirty after that. So, Brian Graver was proposed at twenty-eight and a quarter. It's three fifteen, more than what he's getting now. You're, okay, so you wanna do double.
What's his current now?
He's at.
Twenty-five ten.
Twenty-five ten. So it'd be a dollar fifty-seven and a half, you split it in half, I was wondering, a dollar fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, yeah.
A dollar fifty-eight, a dollar fifty-seven. Then Eric. Is at twenty-six seventy right now. Propose at twenty-nine fifty.
Two dollars and maybe cents, be a dollar four to each.
I assume that we keep everything else the same as far as the overtime would be time and a half of the base pay, Sunday would be double time.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you guys be willing to adjust anything on the on-call pay? I know that's something that's a significant point with them, do you think a hundred bucks might be low there?
So what they get, um, like for their weekend?
If they're on call for that week, they're.
Weekend, weekend. I'm sorry, what'd you say, Rita?
It's week, and then, well, then weekend.
So is it for seven days, is that what it is? Okay.
It's at a hundred dollars now, I didn't think that's, I was, just for the, the constant, you know, commitment to, you know, being available.
And to, do they have to do rounds just on the weekend, though?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct, it's Saturday, that's a, it's about an hour and a half, two hour obligation on Saturday, Sunday, but if there's an emergency, they're obligated for as long.
So they get a hundred dollars on top of their rounds? So they're getting paid double time for their rounds already, plus another hundred on top of that?
And then double time Sunday.
On Sunday?
Yeah.
Okay, so the hundreds on top of that?
It's just a bonus, correct?
Okay.
Cause you can't do anything. You're gonna be here ready to do.
What do you propose? Two hundred?
Two hundred?
What'd you say that's one?
Two hundred? Fifty-two weeks in a year, that's an extra fifty-two hundred dollars, to be split based on who's on-call.
So, and you, you gotta be here, you can't, can't do anything, do anything.
We have talked about, we're going the new hire, potentially spring, because it's a little bit slower, of course, we. Around the, you know, trying to balance, is it better to train someone more slower versus, um, not, so I'm. I'd say at the very least, we're only walk over the side, I'll probably, um, I'm gonna go over the applications of more others, we've had, there's a couple interesting applicants, so.
I'm gonna pull the two hundred, like I said, that's kind of a good fake gesture to, to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to raise the on-call pay to two hundred and over.
I'll second.
That's the second, on favor?
So if you guys, so then before you guys leave, I'll, I'll adjust our salary ordinance. So it'd be ninety, so it'd be effective tomorrow.
Same, same as the pay, whatever.
Right.
Pay period, whatever pay period is.
And then after ninety days, we'll go to full amount.
Yeah.
So be this pay period.
You wanna, you wanna start clean on another, on the next pay period, or?
It works best here.
It's best to start on the pay period. Either you do this pay period, or the next pay period, which is start Monday.
So we can do effective.
Effective, Monday then, new period, period.
Nineteen. If you guys wanna vote on those changes, I'll drop it up right before we kind of conclude, now if you guys sign it. If you're okay with that.
You want to speak right now?
You guys are, you're okay. Did we say any of that?
Yeah. So if we. Raise that pay there, on, uh, Mike, Ryan, and Eric, and going to two hundred dollars a week, is on-call.
Mike would get a two dollars and thirty-one cent an hour raise on Monday the fifteenth. After ninety days, you'd get an additional two dollars and thirty cents raise on the base pay. Brian would get a dollar fifty-eight raise on Monday, after ninety days, an additional dollar fifty-seven. Eric would be a dollar forty, dollar forty, and then on-call would be increased to two hundred.
And make that motion. I'll second. That's the second, on favor.
The personnel policy on vacation time, we, we talked about this last year, I'm understanding, we talked about it every year, I know our policy says that there's. We don't allow vacation time to carry over.
Because we changed it two years ago to make it that policy. As it was, a lot of people are holding, so we decided they couldn't carry over.
I know, last year we did a week, we wanna do a week, or we wanna keep it at none?
So pay five days, or you carry over five days last year?
Yeah, I think they voted on that, yeah, I remember.
Guess I just wanna make sure we're on the same page, that we've done, planned that to do.
I say keep, whether we go wrong.
That was nothing, that was nothing, yeah, we did so the last year, the, because they wanted to do it again.
We've done it for several years.
Yeah, we had changed it, so they couldn't carry over anymore, they had to use their vacation within that year, oh, okay.
Does it cause an issue with them?
I'm not sure why we did it, I just, it's been about three years ago.
That's pretty much standard.
Yeah, usually a week, so.
Except carry over, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I just know sometimes it creates an issue, but I mean, if we can manage it, right? I think weeks are pretty long.
Yeah, five days.
If you're five days.
Can either ca- carry five days over, or get five days credit?
Yeah.
So few of us.
Maybe that's why it was.
Yeah.
They could get to pay now. They could carry over, but not get paid, I mean, it's been approved.
So are we wanting to formalize that?
I would like to formalize this, so we don't have to visit it every year.
Absolutely, yeah, then let's just formalize either they carry over forty hours of vacation from year to year, or take pay for the, for that lot of vacation. Second on that?
Only the forty hours of year to year.
Yes, only the forty hours.
I'll second on that.
That's the main motion, jury second on favor.
I'll probably just put that in like a policy that we can sign next, next month, but at least I'll let it know that that way we can plan, so it's. Carry over pay. All right, um, request for disposal of the nineteen ninety-six four back on truck, that's a truck we got from Greendale. Guys are reluctant to use it, it's an older truck, I personally think it's a, a nice tool and equipment to use, but I think they're just a little uncomfortable starting out with an old truck. Rather than let it sit there and beg them to use it, I think we should probably just dispose of it, we got about ten thousand dollars in it right now, I think we'll. We're kind of at that point where, you know, I really don't wanna spend much more to make it perfect, so to speak, so.
What do you think, can you help?
I think we can get ten to fifteen thousand out of it. Yeah, I would say, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would just like to put it on, you know, go deals or similar government auction shot, auction shot, have, yeah, auction stuff. And just have like a, a, a reserve.
Yeah.
Kind of what we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, uh, for the disposal of the ninety-six four back contract.
That can be a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
Very second, my favor.
And then the Dearborn Community Foundation, we received our annual letter about their, um, endowment matching one-for-one program, um, up to ten thousand dollars. Uh, I do think that's a good idea, if we can convince Lawrence Bridge to put ten thousand dollars into one of our endowments, matching us up to ten, I think it's money well spent. Sort of board, uh, what's your guys' thoughts, or if we can, we, we are currently a recipient of two separate endowments, the Clayton Family Park Maintenance Fund, and then the Quality of Life Improvement Fund. I think we got about five hundred dollars in our distribution from the Clayton family, and then we got about thirty-five hundred, I think, in our, um, distribution from the quality of life.
What did we do last year, did we do it all online?
No, we split them.
Five and five?
No, it wasn't even. Remember how it was, it, it was just, it was just awesome.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Might be like six and four, seven and three.
Yeah.
I can't remember.
I think I wanna pull a little more in, uh.
I would say.
One, because we get more.
Quality of life, you can, you can do more stuff with that.
Yeah. What about Eden, too? Eight thousand in quality life included as a.
Eight in the quality of life, and two in Clayton.
Foundation.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
I think he made a motion to put eight thousand in the quality life, um, two thousand in the, uh, Clayton fund. Charlie second that.
That'll count for live.
So you're all good?
But you got that key part.
No, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Don't be, like, break this ordinance out.
We're getting close.
Are we, are we done?
That's all we have.
All right. Jerry made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Anybody in the public domain first, no?
Oh, no, sorry.
All right.
No.
Jeremy made a motion.
Jerry made a motion?
Justin seconded.